Meeting of the City of Papa Bluff. The agenda for a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to be held on Monday, December 21st, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers at 301 South Fifth Street will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation by Minister Ralph Jefferson of Mount Everie Powerhouse Church and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Amen. Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Heavenly Father, a day that we've never seen before. And Father, we pray that as this City Council now convenes its meeting, Heavenly Father, let your Spirit of love and your Spirit of justice reign. Father, we pray that you would touch each and every heart that is in this place, my Lord. And as they participate in this meeting, Heavenly Father, let the words coming out of their mouth come from you, Heavenly Father, touch hearts and touch minds. And we pray that when the night is through, Heavenly Father, Heavenly Father, that they have done a mighty work in your name as they govern the people of this community. And then, Lord, we pray that as we leave this place, Heavenly Father, let everyone reach their appointed destination safely. Let them be a true blessing when they get there. It is in Christ's name we pray and for his sake. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Jefferson? Thank you. Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Here.
Councilman DeGarris?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Cornman?
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor? Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Clerk Young. Item five, disclosure of interest. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting.
Mayor, I have a possible conflict on workshop items C and D and action items FF and GG.
Item six, citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none. Item seven, consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the City Council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may request to do so.
Motion, we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item eight, workshop items for discussion. Item A, the City Council will review the proposed budget for the City of Papa Bluff and Municipal Utilities for fiscal year 2021. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Presented this at our last meeting, asked again to workshop, but I did want to point out a couple revisions, just some minor revisions. The budget for the planning department was changed just a little bit. I plan on having a new planner in place after the first year, so that starting salary is reflected in that department's budget. Our finance department budget, our accounting manager, Thursday was her last day, she resigned, and so a new starting salary for that department budget is also reflected. And on the police capital budget, there was an item that I overlooked that has been added back into that, the police department capital budget, that's been changed slightly. And then, based on those other starting salaries, the salary schedule has been amended to reflect those salaries for those positions that we'll be filling in January. Other than that, same as was presented at our last meeting. And I believe this is on the agenda for the voting session tonight, too, so we'll have it in place by January 1st.
Make a motion, move this to tonight's voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, the City Council will consider an agreement between the International Brotherhood... Too quick. Okay. Not thinking fast enough. The City Council will consider an agreement between the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 702 and the Electric Department. Mr. Bach?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I believe in your packet you were also given this, but I'll briefly go through it on the Electric Department. Article 10, under new employees, will allow employees who transfer from other city departments to use accumulated vacation and also be allowed to use accumulated sick leave on a case-by-case basis. Under Article 23, wages, proposed five-year agreement, 3% cost of living increase per year. Article 25, vacation, corrected the earned vacation regarding the employee's use of workman's Article 27, sick leave, we remove the two-day allowance application, which is in the contradiction of the bonus day allowance. Article 24, funeral leave, will allow five days for a stepchild. Article 31, employee benefits, changed to correspond to the ordinance number 1950 regarding new hire health insurance benefits. This was plus 2% wage increase for the drop of the employee-dependent health insurance Article 32, under uniforms, include the wording that field employees to be allowed uniform allowance. And Article 34, the duration of the agreement, again, it's a five-year agreement, starting January 1st, 2021, and will continue in full force until December 31st, 2025. Staff and I worked with this. We believe it's a fair agreement and would recommend the City Council approve the agreement.
I move to re- pass this on to the voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item C, the City Council will consider an agreement between the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 702 and the Water and Sewer Department. Mr. Bach?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I believe also in your packet you were given an itemized list of all changes that were made, and I will briefly go through those changes for the water sewer agreement. Again, Article 10, under new employees, will allow employees who transfer from city departments, other city departments, to use accumulated vacation, and they'll also be allowed to use accumulated sick leave on a case-by-case basis. Article 20, under wages, five-year agreement, 3% cost of living increase. Article 23, on vacation, corrected the earned vacation regarding the employee's use of workman's compensation. Article 25, sick leave, we remove the two-day allowance application, which contradicted the bonus day allowance. Article 27, funeral leave, will allow five days for a stepchild. Article 29, under employee benefits, changed to correspond to the ordinance 1950 regarding new hires' health insurance benefits, plus 2% wage increase for the drop of the employee-dependent health insurance coverage. And under Article 33, duration of agreement, become effective January 1st, 2021, and will continue through December 31st of 2025. Again, the superintendents, I went through this and negotiated, and we feel this agreement is fair and recommend the City Council approve the agreement. Do you have any questions?
Motion, please move to tonight's voting session.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item D, the City Council will consider an amendment to the City Code in Section 120.60 or 060 for the evidency requirements. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, presently, employees on the general fund side of the city, excluding municipal utilities, are required to live within the boundaries of Butler County. I've had conversations with some department managers, and really, it's kind of, especially when it comes to our police department and dispatch, you know, the number of applicants we get for open positions is really seeing a decrease. Some other cities around the state, including Cape Girardeau, have recently had discussions about expanding their residency requirements specifically for the police department to include adjacent counties. You know, a lot of times when I bring you items, I bring you my suggestions. I wanted to just bring this to you as a discussion to see kind of what your thoughts were. You know, I think there's definitely benefits to expanding the applicant pool for, especially when you start looking at the police department, you know, nationally, it's kind of been a trend that fewer and fewer people are wanting to get into law enforcement, so to be able to give them a larger applicant pool to pull from. Even, you know, we've had a considerable amount of turnover on our 911 dispatch center, and they struggle sometimes to find enough applicants to fill those open positions as people are leaving. There's other parts of that section, of course, like I mentioned, municipal utilities, they require that their employees live within a 12-mile radius of the Business Highway 60 and 67 intersection. Talking to Mr. Bach, you know, that is a part of their contract, and that's not something that we'd want to change. I believe as the city manager, I should live in the city limits, not asking for that to change. The very first section of that ordinance states that in the judgment of the hiring officer, where two or more applicants have equal qualifications, the preference shall be given to applicant living within the city limits. You know, I think that definitely should stay the same. So really, the requirement for everybody else, you know, I'm just kind of interested in your input and your thoughts, and if you had any.
You know, I understand, you know, the need for good applicants. We've got a great police department, they've always, and all of our city departments. I just think that, you know, once they're an employee, and if they live within the boundaries, I liked it when it was just the city or within 12 miles, because it seems like it gives you some, for lack of a better term, ownership to the town. And I think if you're proud of the town you're working for, you're going to do a better job of it. Now, the county's not too far, at most, probably, what, 20 miles, anywhere in Butler County? You know, what's going to happen, say, if they get one from Stoddard County or Dexter or Saxon or somewhere else, and then all of a sudden, we got an emergency, how long is it going to take those employees to respond, to take care of our citizens who live in
Like I said, I do definitely think, you know, that is something to consider, you know, as we discuss this, is, you know, and limiting it to just adjacent counties kind of limits that distance, but it still does. I mean, if we're on the other side of Donovan, it's going to take you a while to get into work.
Especially dodging the deer.
Especially dodging the deer this time of year, yes. So I didn't, you know, I'm not asking you to necessarily vote on this tonight, just thought we'd talk about it, and I'll consider, continue to do some more research, and, you know, if you're interested and want to talk about this more, we can bring it back up on another workshop session after the first year. If you have some action you want to look at tonight, I'm open for suggestions.
Well, Mr. Winters, I'm pretty much in agreement with a lot of what Mr. DeGarris has said. I'm not too inclined to think, especially in regards to the public safety departments, that they should live in another county. I feel I don't have too much opposition to them living in the county that the city's in, but as you said, if they're in an adjacent county, that could be on the other side of the adjacent county, and that's a long ways off. So that's kind of my thoughts on it.
But if there's, if we have it now, within 12 miles?
That's for the municipal utilities only.
Right. I mean, couldn't we do something like that to avoid having them on the other side of Ripley County or Wayne or whatever county? Be within 12 miles or 10 miles or whatever, set a distance maybe, to be able to pick up, glean a few that are around the edge adjoining our county, but maybe not on the far edge of it.
Sure, I mean, just like, you know, that utilities requirement is in there to, you know, based on response time, you know, when you have an outage, you know, Mr. Bach wants his folks that are on call to be able to get back quickly to get our power turn back on. So, I mean, we could definitely set a radius, you know, from the intersection, you know, if you'd like me to look at that and, you know, bring back some suggestions like that, I'd be glad to.
That'd be good.
Okay.
I mean, at least kind of listen times.
Sure.
Or even see what the furthest time would be if it is the edge of Ripley County or Wayne County or...
So if everybody's in agreement, I'll, if you want to move this to another workshop item, and I can gather that information and bring it back to you, and look at some, a radius around, from around the same kind of intersection right in the middle of town, so...
Yeah, I motion, we move this to January 4th for another workshop and 40.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item nine, action required items. AA, Bill Number 8279, the City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing and directing the submission of a ballot proposition to the qualified voters of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to consider imposing a local use tax at the same rate as the local sales tax of the City of Papa Bluff for purchases from out-of-state vendors that exceed $2,000 and the general election, at a general election to be held in the City of Papa Bluff on April
Motion for first reading, Bill Number 8279.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance imposing a use tax for the general revenue purposes at a rate of 2.14% pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Section 144.600 through 144.761 RSMO, providing for a use tax to be repealed, reduced, or raised in the same amount as the city sales tax is repealed, reduced, or raised, and providing for the submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, for their approval at the primary election called and to be held in the City of Papa Bluff on April 6th, 2021.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8279.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance imposing a use tax for general revenue purposes at the rate of 2.14% pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Section 144.600 through 144.761 RSMO, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced, or raised in the same amount as the city sales tax is repealed, reduced, or raised, and providing for the submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the City of Papa Bluff for their approval at the primary election called and to be held in the city on April 6th, 2021.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you. Bill Number 8279 is adopted. Item BB, Bill Number 8280, the City Council will take action on an ordinance approving the proposed budget for the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, and Municipal Utilities fiscal
Motion for first reading, Bill 8280.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, approving the budget for the City of Papa Bluff and the Municipal Utilities Department for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2021.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8280.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance of the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri, approving the budget for the City of Papa Bluff and the Municipal Utilities Department for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2021.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman DeGarris?
No.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Excuse me?
It passes.
Bill Number 82?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Please, I'm sorry.
You didn't call my phone.
Okay. Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Okay. It does.
Okay. Bill Number 8280 is adopted. Item CC, Bill Number 8281, the City Council will take action on an ordinance accepting proposed L-H Lane as a dedicated, as a dedicated city street within the City of Papa Bluff.
Motion for first reading, Bill Number 8281.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance accepting certain real estate located near the entrance of Clinton Park as a dedicated street to the City of Papa Bluff and naming and designating said corridor as L-H Lane.
Motion for second reading, Bill 8281.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance accepting certain real estate located near the entrance of Clinton Park as a dedicated street in the City of Papa Bluff and naming and designating said corridor as L-H Lane.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Bill Number 8281 is adopted. Item DD, Bill Number 8282, the City Council will take action on an ordinance amending Section 120.160 funeral leave.
Motion for first reading, Bill Number 8282.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri's Code of City Ordinances, Section 120.610, relating to paid funeral leave for city employees.
Motion for second reading of Bill 8282.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Papa Bluff, Missouri's Code of City Ordinances, Section 120.610, relating to paid funeral leave for city employees.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Bill Number 8282 is adopted. Item EE, Bill Number 8283, the City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute lease agreements for the use of property.
Motion for first reading, Bill Number 8283.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the extension of lease agreements with Jerry and Barbara Sneathern and Larry Beebe for properties adjacent to the City of Papa Bluff Police Station.
Motion for adoption, Bill 8283.
Second reading, please.
Second reading.
Okay. Motion for second reading, Bill 8283.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the extension of lease agreements with Jerry and Barbara Sneathern and Larry Beebe for properties adjacent to the Papa Bluff Police Station.
Motion for adoption, Bill Number 8283.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilman DeGarris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Bill Number 8283 is adopted. Item FF, Bill Number 8284, the City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 702 for its members who are employees of the Electric Department.
Motion for first reading, Bill 8284.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 702 for its employees and the Papa Bluff Electric Department. for its employees and the Papa Bluff Electric Department.
I make a move. We have the second reading.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 702 for its employees and the City of Papa Bluff Electric Department.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Bill number 8284 is adopted. Item GG, bill number 8285, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 702 and its members who are employees of the Water Sewer Department.
Motion for first reading of bill 8285.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 702 for its employees and the Papa Bluff Water Sewer Department.
Motion for second reading of bill number 8285. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 702 for its employees and the Papa Bluff Water Sewer Department.
Motion for adoption of bill 8285.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Clerk Young.
Councilman Cornman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Bill number 8285 is adopted. We will move to item 10, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just end tonight on some good news. I'll just read a letter that I received from the Missouri Department of Transportation this week, or I'm sorry, it was dated December 16th, so it was last week. Congratulations, MoDOT's Cost Share Committee approved the city's application to construct a divided multi-lane interstate highway for Route 67 from one mile south of Route 160 to County Road 338 at its December 10th, 2020 meeting. Cost share funds not to exceed $3,139,212 are available in state fiscal years '22 and '23. Dave Wyman, area engineer, will be contacting you to proceed with the execution of the cost share. So, we had, we have now received grant funding and, of course, our Highway 67 sales tax funding that will complete four lanes of Highway 67 for four miles from the 167 junction south. It's exciting news for us. We, if you remember, applied back, I think it was in October that we applied, and received notification that that grant has been approved and funded for a 50-50 cost share with MoDOT on that one-mile section. So like I said, that gets us to four miles now. We'll continue to work on securing other funding to keep moving forward on that project. It's exciting for us to hear that, get that news, and we were needing that piece to finish that first four miles. I would like to just publicly thank a few people that were involved in getting this, getting this grant approved, first from MoDOT, from our southeast district office in Sykesville, and Dave Wyman, who's just, he's the area engineer, he's great to work with. We appreciate Dave and his support of our community. MoDOT also has a new district engineer that kind of in charge of that office over there. His name is Mark Corkin. He's from, actually, originally lived for a while, at least in the Donovan area. He's been on the job for two or three months now, and has been great to work with and really went to battle for us with MoDOT for this particular grant award. And of course, the Highway 67 Corporation and their board, Chairman Bill Robinson worked really hard on getting this application completed, and Steve Halter was involved heavily in the application. And then, of course, our local elected officials that were really instrumental in supporting our project, and especially Senator Doug Leibler and Representative Jeff Shaw, they've helped us over the years greatly in getting some of this funding done. And also Representative Hardy Billington, Senator-elect Jason Bean, and Representative-elect Darrell Atchison have also all been, gone to battle for us to help get this funding secured. We appreciate that, and we're excited as this project starts to move forward. This is our last meeting of 2020. I think we can all say that we're thankful for that. It's been a, it's been a trying year, and I'm confident that 2021 is going to be a, we're going to move forward and keep seeing things happening around town. I just want to say Merry Christmas to all of you and to everybody in town. And that's all I have, and I guess we will see you all again on July the, I'm sorry, July the 4th. We'll see you all on January the 4th.
Okay. I would just like to say Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to anybody else. On that note, the chair...
Everybody stay awake and make sure 2020 goes.
And worry your mind. On that note, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Aye.